A Supertalk Mississippi Media Production. Pike County, here comes your morning show. Dave in the Morning on 93.5 FM, Supertalk Mississippi.
So now, understand, you're not going to dictate to me what I do and what I don't do, but I'm still the mayor, Mr. Brown.
None of this news is recorded. None of this is signed and recorded. Correct?
No, it's not. It's recorded. I'm being accused.
End of conversation.
Said I want to make it on record. I want the allegations in writing, party accused, or on recording of this arrest.
And now, here's your host, Dave Hughes.
Well, top of the morning to you. How you doing? Tuesday morning is here, and so is Dave. You are going to have a great day today. It's not a wish, it's not a hope, that's an order. You're gonna have a great day today. And every time you think you're not having a great day, remember, no. Dave told you you're having a great day, so approach it as such, because heaven knows there is an innumerable number of people willing to explain to you at great length why you're having a horrible day. You know what I'm talking about. It doesn't matter what happens, it doesn't matter what you do, i- it doesn't matter what the situation is, it's horrible. That's the basic tenor of public conversation now. So, we're combating that here on the show. You're gonna have a great day today, all day long, all the way until you go to bed with a satisfied, happy little smile on your lips. You're gonna have a great day today. How do I know this? I'm Dave. No, seriously, that's all it takes. It's stunning just how easy it is to have a great day, uh, once you realize that, well, you're having a great day and what everybody else thinks doesn't matter. They don't get a vote, they don't get to participate. And if they try to drag you down, just look at them and go, "And you are..." And then move on with your day. You're gonna have a great day, and if you have a great day, you encourage other people to have a great day, even if you don't say anything. They see you having a great day because it shows, it's obvious, and it spreads. Be the infection everybody needs, is what I'm saying. We're dangerously close to getting back to talking about the monkeys again, but we'll do that another time. They supposedly are tracking a second one. There were three loose, one got shot and killed by a mama from 60 feet, good shot, uh, because she raised a 16-year-old that didn't want a free monkey for whatever reason. Uh, now they're apparently tracking a second one. They think they have the area where it's at. The third one? Who knows? Who knows what the third monkey is doing? He's got a side-by-side and is off to the races somewhere. We'll figure it out eventually. Uh, we do have a work session tonight, the teeniest, tiniest little work session in the McComb City Board that I can remember in quite some time. We will look at the agenda a little bit later on in the show, which will take about three minutes. And then we'll move on. I mean, it's deceptive. There are only four numbered items, but one of those items has three things under it, the other one has five. So, it's more like 10 items on the work session agenda for tonight, that will not stop it from going well over two hours long. I have zero doubt. Because it usually runs over two hours for every work session, uh, for whatever reason. Got some other stuff to talk about with the city, including a mayoral candidate who has thrown their hat into the ring. Uh, we're gonna talk about that. For mayor, because you know it's coming up, next year is election year. We get a whole new swing at it again, new pitch coming in. To see what we can do with the city of McComb. We've got, uh, great stuff, as I have talked about, happening in Magnolia. Still want to get the mayor in here. Just, schedule has been absolutely insane, mine, not his, well, his is too, but, uh, he's not the holdup. It's me, just because I haven't found a clear spot to put him yet, because I want to have a long conversation with the new mayor of Magnolia, because he walked in the door, well, he kicked the door in and started doing stuff. Which goes back to what we have said several times here on the show, I've said it repeatedly. Most people seem to have forgotten a very simple fact of life, which is that you can just do stuff. It doesn't have to get bogged down in six months of back and forth, yeah, yeah, sometimes you can just do stuff. And that's how things improve. That's what's happening in Magnolia. It's what's been happening in Summit for a long time, Mayor Percy, and look at the results. Look at the results in Summit. How's Summit doing? Exactly. Magnolia, now on that same trajectory, if you want my opinion. McComb? Well, we'll find out next year when the polls close, won't we? That's where we're at right now. Uh, but we'll take a look at, uh, all of that coming up. Weather, that cold front is coming in on Sunday. Uh, right now, the forecasters are calling it for Tuesday as being the coldest morning. They're talking about, in Pike County, Tuesday morning, a wind chill of about 30. No, thank you. But again, we are to that time of year. We, I mean, it's here, it's November. If you're waiting for the heat wave, you got a long wait coming. So, again, I'm gonna reiterate, and I'm doing this every day, because we have people that come in and out, uh, this is a mixer environment, people wander in, wander out on the show on various days. Uh, cold weather is coming. We got a wind chill below the freezing point forecast for the first part of next week. Take care of your cold weather preparations now. Get your pipes taken care of, those outdoor faucets, get those wrapped. Uh, get, somebody sent me a message with a great piece of advice that I didn't include when I talked about this yesterday, uh, check, check your antifreeze in your vehicles, get your vehicles ready to go for the winter. Get everything ready to go. You've got the rest of this week and the weekend to get it done, and then you don't have to worry about it. It's taken care of before it ever happens. You've got plenty of time between now and when this cold front moves through on Sunday, the temperature really will start dropping on Monday. Uh, still gonna be coolish, but not freezing cold like it's going to be the first part of next week. So, you've got all the time in the world, take care of that stuff now. Don't want to hear any whining about busted pipes. You've been told. Now, having said that, I don't think it is a situation where you're gonna see a lot of freezing happen on Monday, which could, especially for exposed pipes, because the wind chill kinda what counts in that situation, and if the wind chill's getting down to 30, that's cold enough to cause some problems. Don't think there are gonna be any problems, but boy, is this a fantastic starter's pistol for the cold weather this year. Uh, it's a great way to focus you on what needs to be done. Change your air filter, by the way, in your house. It's a great opportunity for that, too. No, it has nothing to do with staying warm, it's just, that thing's nasty. When's the last time you changed it? You're gonna pull it out there, you could peel the layer of mess off the top of it and knit a nice sweater, probably. Or perhaps that's just me, I don't know. Just throwing that out there as a separate reminder, check everything, check all the things, and get them ready, and get everything winterized, because winter is here. I know, it's kinda freaky. Thought it would never get here, and then all at once it did. You know, just like always happens. That's the way it always seems to work. Tell you what, well, let's go ahead and take our break. When we come back, we'll get into some McComb City doings and goings on. We'll take a look at the agenda for tonight's work session, and talk about the mayoral candidates that has already thrown their quite dapper hat into the ring. Talk about that next on Supertalk Mississippi Pike County, 93.5. Keep it here.
Ladies, your health is your priority, and the Women's Health Center in McComb is here to support you. We're thrilled to announce the return of Dr. Anne Vu. Dr. Vu joins our dedicated team, including Dr. Kevin Richardson, Nurse Practitioner Shayla Stanberry, and midwife Tara Givens. From routine checkups to specialized care, we offer comprehensive services tailored to your needs. Schedule your appointment today. Visit us at 1318 Harrison Avenue, or call 601-684-2300. The Women's Health Center, where your well-being comes first.
Don't miss Dave in the Morning, even when you miss it first time. You can catch it on the podcast. Missing out would be a crime. Supertalk 93.5 is always the place to be. Wanna get the podcast version? Here, my friend is the key. SupertalkPikeCounty.com, it's all there and it's all the rage. Spotify, Amazon, or Apple are just right there on the page. Dave in the Morning, late at night, or anytime you have to pray. SupertalkPikeCounty.com, it's all there and it's all the rage. Spotify, Amazon, or Apple are just right there on the page.
Welcome back. Supertalk Mississippi Pike County, 93.5. Dave Hughes here. Let's take a look at the agenda for tonight's work session of the McComb City Board of Mayor Ann Seligman, and, uh, it should be a fairly calm evening, it looks like. Uh, number, well, I say that, number one, Geneath and Sam Daniel want to talk about the Railroad Depot Museum, doing some research into the whole fire suppression system thing, and that was discussed, but I don't know if it was in the contract. Which is gonna take this to a whole different level, uh, because then the city of McComb would wind up, if it wasn't in the contract, uh, being on the hook for non-payment of services rendered. Or, as we call it in the city of McComb, a Tuesday. Uh, anyways, Geneath and Sam Daniel to talk about the Railroad Depot Museum at the start of tonight's work session. Uh, they, they have done a yeoman's job on that thing, by the way. You would be stunned to find out how much work they've put into getting it back together and getting it back open again. Uh, and they deserve a huge round of thanks for doing that, and a lot of appreciation. Very good job they've done. They're gonna talk tonight. Henry Green wants to, again, talk about discussing inspectors, building inspectors, being allowed to carry weapons. There's a simple compromise here. I don't know why we keep talking about this. Give them all a taser. I mean, that, that's simple, that's easy. To me, anyway. Because I understand why they don't want to be defenseless walking onto somebody else's property to give them a fine in the climate that we have on planet Earth today. That makes a million, million pounds of sense. People will get mad at you, "Did you see the guy?" Was in the news, wasn't here, uh, that somebody walked up and kicked his buggy in the store, so he stabbed him repeatedly in response. You kick somebody's buggy and you're gonna get sent to the hospital with critical injuries from a knife attack. Walk onto somebody's property and explain that they're gonna have to pay a fine, or they're gonna have to tear something down, or they're gonna have to put out a lot of money to build something extra, or put in something that isn't there, that's not up to code? Yeah, I think I would be worried about the potential reactions there, too. "Oh, that doesn't happen here." Don't start with me. We can go have a debate about what does and doesn't happen in the world of proper actions, if you'd like. We can schedule it at Oterius Marks Park. Don't even try to pretend everything's wonderful. So, yeah, I get that, fully get that. But there is a compromise here, because I do agree, you don't just give them a gun, send them out the door. That, that's asking for a different set of problems. Liability is one of them, but some kind of tragedy happening is another big one, because they have to be trained. I understand the, the home inspector, some of them do have training, do have certification, which is fine, but I get it, but it's disingenuous to me to pretend that there's no other option. We either send them in with a bazooka and a shoulder-mounted guided missile, or we send them with nothing. No, there's a lot of middle ground here. Pick a middle ground that makes everybody happy and move on. Because I do understand the need for it, I really do. Item number three, Garrett Smith, Viewn Voices, another one for Delaware Avenue Water and Sewer. Again, whatever we're paying for that, worth it? Worth it? If you don't believe me, again, just take a drive down Delaware. Man, it is nice. They did a great job with that. Uh, the Citywide Mill and Overlay, the streets they have gotten to and completed are great. The other one's eh. That's not the fault of the Citywide Mill and Overlay, and the bill for the work that has already been done, because it's very nice, very well done. Item C, Burke Avenue Change Order and Additional Work. Have you been down Burke lately? You thought we had roads, with the exception of locusts, which is its own separate set of problems, uh, but you thought we had roads, you thought we had streets that were a danger to your front end. You, you could rip the entire oil pan and exhaust system out from under your car going down Burke if you're not paying attention and don't know what it is. If you've been down through there, you know what I'm talking about. Change order and additional work. Uh, don't know what the change order is for, but additional work is most definitely needed at this point. Item number four on the agenda. These are all brought by Mayor Lockley, the first one, the quotes for the demolition of Edgewood Park and making it usable for the soccer program. Uh, that's the first one. We had a big debate about that, big discussion about a month ago, uh, in one of the work sessions on doing this, because Edgewood Park, I've said it before, I'm gonna say it again here. Spent a lot of happy days at Edgewood Park. My son played in Dixie Youth Baseball, had, had a lot of great times there, a lot of great days there. Not the last time he was in town, but a couple of times ago. We were out just riding around, and he wanted to go ride over by there, and at that point, it, it looked derelict. Everything was grown up, everything was just in horrible condition because it's not being used anymore. Everything transferred to Summit. And he said, "What happened?" Because he, he no longer lives here. Like a lot of people in that generation, he wanted to find work that wasn't, you know, what the city is willing to pay or equal, uh, so he went and found a better job. Uh, and I explained to him what was going on, and he said, "Man, that is so sad," and we just stopped, and he just stared at it for a while. But it is time, past time, to do something about it. If it's not going to be used, let's turn it into something that might be used. That's, that's an agreeable plan. Uh, be interested to hear what the new quotes are, because they had to get the quotes readjusted, because originally it was just "Tear it all down," and then it turned into "Tear it all down and make it usable for soccer." So, we'll see what the quotes, uh, come in. The Mississippi Municipal Liability Plan. If ever there was a municipality that needed liability insurance, it's obviously the city of McComb City. So, yeah, let's discuss that. Uh, item C, a proclamation for the holidays, important work, in case you forgot when Christmas is. Item D, a quote from Mills, Scanlon, Dye, and Pittman. It's four of them, so you know it's, uh, it's important work. And, uh, item E, uh, the housing report for the housing of prisoners for July. I would like to remind you, this isn't up for vote tonight, that would be next week, halfway through November, that we're voting to pay July's bill. Well, there are reasons, yes, there are reasons. We don't know how to handle business in the city of McComb. That's the reasons. That, that's been obvious for quite a while. The state auditor would back me up on that. He's put it down in writing that we don't know how to conduct business in the city of McComb. Well, other people have done, I don't care, I'm talking about the city of McComb. In isolation, look at it in and of itself, we don't know how to conduct business properly, period. We're paying a July bill in November. That's four months late. What bills do you have? Let me ask you this question. If you pay your water bill to the city of McComb four months late, do you still have water when you go down there to pay it? Oh, no, they, they're not gonna perform like they expect you to perform when it's you paying them, instead of them paying their bills. That has gotten incredibly old. Yes, I know, there are negotiations, we have to figure this, we have to figure that. Oh, get over it, it's taken us a month to, to approve meeting minutes, because we have to go adjust them. It's been said out loud. Very next meeting, you should approve the minutes of the previous meeting. It's not that hard. Double-check them to make sure everybody's name is misspelled, is spelled properly, and all the votes were recorded properly, and you move on. It does not take a month to do that. It does not take four months to pay a bill. Well, they got it to us late. Well, ask them to get it to you quicker, so you can get the, the payment in. This is a continuing pattern of behavior, though, and it's very troublesome to me. Uh, still paying for, like, like I said earlier in the agenda, Garrett Smith is bringing a bill for the Delaware Avenue Water and Sewer Project. How long has that been done? And we're still working our way through paying the bills. It just seems like we move at a glacial pace, and by comparison, I want to remind you of the story in Magnolia with, uh, Mayor Marvin down there, the new mayor. Uh, they had a problem with the sewer system in Magnolia. And they were having some difficulties with it. He immediately put out a notice and said, "We're aware of the problems, and we're working to, to get this figured out and straightened out." A week later, they had installed new pumps and the problem was solved. One week! There were no endless discussions and debates, there, there was no dithering back and forth. "We got a problem, let's fix it." That goes back to what I said at the beginning of the show. It's okay to just do stuff. And the problem was solved, everybody was happy. That's why, that, that is one of the the chief stories that, in my mind, is backing up my opinion that, uh, Magnolia is on a firm upward trajectory right now. Very much so. Because you've got a mayor and a, and a board that works with him that'll just do stuff. Stuff needs doing, he does it. We'll deal with the nonsense later, we gotta get the important things taken care of. We haven't had that sense in the city of McComb for a while, and I think partially it's because the city of McComb and the people at City Hall seem to think we're a lot bigger and more important than we actually are. You're not running Cleveland, Mississippi, or Ohio, either one. You're not in charge of Chicago. This does not take endless debate to pay the bills, to get the audits done, to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. This, this is not a long-drawn-out process, because you've got to understand how important our business is. We have an almost direct apples-to-apples comparison with the sewer problem that happened in Magnolia that was fixed in a week versus, we, we had fun with it here on the show, uh, the Poop River that was running through McComb. You remember that, I'm sure. Where you had open sewage just running through a ditch, was the report in one of the meetings. That had apparently been doing that for quite some time. And then we started having a discussion about who needed to do it, and the best way to do it, and what needed to be done about it, and, uh, debate, 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 debate. Meanwhile... That's the difference. That's the difference between McComb and Magnolia. I'm sorry, McComb's not that much bigger than Magnolia. To where one of them can fix something in a week, and the other one can fix something in a few months. No, there's not that big of a difference. But we get the airs, we get the, the inflated sense of self-importance, and that bogs everything down. And it's, uh, not productive. We're dealing with important issues here, to which I think a lot of people, from everything I hear, everything I'm told, a lot of people have the responsive reaction to that of, "Shut up. Just do what you're supposed to do, and do it in a timely manner." That is not a big ask. "Well, there's a lot of processes that have to go on. There's a lot of, a lot of things that have to be done. Do them quicker, then." Just my thought on that. Uh, and that's it for the agenda for tonight's work session, except for the announcements, which does contain, usually the announcements are like, "The next work session will be, the next board meeting will be," so forth and so on. Got one you'll be interested in in the announcements? There's only one announcement for tonight, the City of McComb Christmas Parade, Saturday, December 6th, at 10:00 a.m. Weather permitting, we've run into that in the past. We had ice on the ground one year, and weren't able to do it. So, basically, in a month. Uh, what is that, four weeks from this Saturday? So, McComb Christmas Parade is on the way, on Saturday, December 6th, 2025. Now, we talk about change. We talk about, I've been talking about it with, uh, in, in terms of the city of Magnolia and what's going on there. and what's going on there. City of McComb, yesterday, Ward 5 selectman Bruce Mullins made a post on Facebook. I'm going to read it to you exactly as it's written. Bruce Mullins for mayor gives the address. "To the citizens of the city of McComb City, Mississippi. Today I announce my intention to seek the position of mayor in the city of McComb City, Mississippi in the 2026 election. I am a Democrat, but make no mistake about it, I am a McComite first. I grew up in McComb, a town that I love and I often reminisce about the good old days." Don't we all? Don't we all? He goes on to say, "I've noticed the changes, some good, some not so good. In spite of the problems we're experiencing in our great city, these could become the good old days for our children if we're careful. Times are changing, so we must work together as a community to make these days and future days safer and prosperous for all of our citizens. Otherwise, we may not have any good old days to talk about five years from now." Stop me when you hear something you disagree with, by the way. "It does not matter if you're a Democrat, Republican or Independent. There is more that unites us than divides us. Towns grow because of the shared values of its communities, not its troubles. Let us recognize the values of the citizens of McComb together because we can make our city a great place to live and to visit. Thank you for your support, Bruce Mullins." I've been saying for this entire term that Bruce Mullins seems to have quite a fair dollop of sense, common sense. So it, it's interesting that that's his initial message before he has the declaring for office doesn't start until January. So it's a little bit early. But he threw his hat all the way out there in the ring. But I will say this, one, one thing that he says in there. "In spite of the problems that we are experiencing in our great city, these could become the good old days for our children if we are careful." I don't think careful's gonna do it. We have been careful to make sure we don't upset anybody. We have been extremely careful to tippy toe around the actual problems. So that we can keep everybody happy and, and, and look like we're, uh, you know, on the right side on things. There are times when you don't need a surgeon's scalpel, you need a wrecking ball. And I get it, don't get me wrong. I'm, I'm not disagreeing with anything he says here. I'm just saying, uh, a lot of our problems are caused by the people that have been insisting everybody recognize that we have all these problems. Right? And creating problems by trying to force people to agree with something they don't agree with. It's happened multiple times over the last, what, eight, 10, 12 years? Multiple times. We have to get away from that and we have to follow the method. I'm going to refer to it again in Magnolia. There's a problem, you fix it. We didn't touch second base? Uh, how's your toilet flushing? I don't care about that, let's fix it. We have to have that attitude moving forward in the city of McComb. Whoever wins any election, that wasn't an endorsement, I just read you his post. And I have commented many times, I thought he had some sense. I just think we have to ironically enough, be careful that we're not too careful. Being careful in the wrong ways about the wrong things is what got us where we're at. And I don't know about you, I'm not a big fan of where we're at. Can it be turned around? Possibly, probably. Will it be? It's going to take people that are going to come in and not stand for any of the nonsense anymore. We don't need a month debate on something to do for the citizens of McComb. We just need to do it. Because again, it's okay to just do stuff. We have completely lost that ability. If you look at it from a corporate standpoint. We somehow have managed to burden ourselves with the problems of being a large corporation without any of the advantages. Cause in the business world, if you have, uh, a small business and you got like you and one employee and you're going great and it's exploding and business is exploding and things are going great and then it starts going south a little bit, you can pivot, you could turn on a dime and fix the problem and move on. And keep growing. If you're an enormous monolithic corporation, well, if there's a problem, we've got to have a board meeting. But first, we probably need to have a manager's meeting before the board meeting to get ready for the meeting. Then after the meeting, we're going to have to have an after-meeting meeting so that we can discuss how to construct the after-action report so that we can put that out and get feedback and get buy-in from the relevant individuals. And then we'll get back together for another meeting so we can discuss it. And looking at everybody's schedules, I think we'll be comfortable in making a move to try to correct this problem in about three months. That's how we operate in the city of McComb, but we're not a big enormous corporation. I'm sorry, city of McComb's a small town. We got 11,000 people. There is no excuse that we trundle on and on for months and months debating things and discussing things because we want to make sure that everybody is taken care of. We want to make sure that everybody is happy with everything and all we wind up doing is ticking off everybody instead. We need to get more of that small startup business mindset of, things are going good, oh, there's a problem, fix it, fixed, moving on. Instead of having a work session before the meeting, before the next work session after at the meeting, we decide not to vote through the, the thing because it needs more discussion. We've got to be careful with this. And then you go to another work session and then before you know it, you look up and it's two months later and still nothing has happened. We see that play out over and over and over. We have to become more agile minded with politics in the city of McComb, with municipal governance. But if you act that way, it's not about you, it's about the citizens. And that has been an attitude that has appeared to be somewhat lacking for a while in the city of McComb. Don't care who you are, don't care how important you think you are. Is the problem fixed? That's the attitude that we have to develop and that's the attitude we have to use to formulate our operating plan, if you will, of how we're going to deal with things. So keep that in mind as we get ready for the election season. Uh, if you're tired of all the problems, if you're tired of things apparently getting worse, sometimes even if they're not, they still look and feel like they're getting worse. All of that can be fixed, but there's a bunch of people that aren't going to like the way it gets fixed. Because they want to be part of the process and you've got to listen to my buy-in and we've got to do this and we've got to add this to it. We can't do one simple thing. It's got to have 16 other things crammed into it. And then we've got to discuss the merits and, and the detriments to each of those things before we include them. And then, then, then we need to get a legal opinion and then we got to get a consultant in here to come and talk to us about it. Meanwhile, we still haven't completed an audit for the last three years, but that's okay because at least we're being considerate. Being considerate will wreck you in the business world. And as we're finding out, as we're watching everything unfold, the same thing applies to the political world. Name another president who's gotten more done in the first 10 months of his term than President Trump this time around. He doesn't care what anybody thinks. He just stomps into the room like, like a bull in a china shop. And I mean that in the best possible way. And everybody can deal with him or not. But if they don't, they're going to get trampled. So everybody deals with him. That's what it takes sometimes. And that's definitely what it takes when things are far enough gone to where you have little to no chance using any other method. So I, I just want to throw that out there. I just want to make sure everybody understands, uh, that to fix big problems takes big action, quick action. And I want you to have that in mind. Now that we've had the first one come out, we're going to start seeing more people declare for office in the city of McComb, definitely after the first of the year. Don't know who it's going to be, don't know who's going to run for what. I'm just saying as a general statement. While you're looking at the names on your ballot next year for the city of McComb elections. Keep in mind, we need people that are willing to just do things. Not debate things and puff their chest out and preen their feathers and say, look at me, I'm doing such a great job, I'm so important. Because that hasn't gotten us anywhere. Just my thought, just my opinion. Why, yes, it is going to cause me problems. Why, no, I still don't care. Just want to say it again, none of that had any relation to selectman Mullins whatsoever, really. It's just, he's the first one to declare and that, that was the starting pistol for me. We continue on this Tuesday morning right after this.
Dr. Patrick Daigle is now seeing patients at Mississippi Women's OB-GYN. While his location has changed from the Women's Health Center, Dr. Daigle's commitment to exceptional care remains stronger than ever. You'll find the same trusted care now at a new location within the Southwest Health Network. Dr. Daigle and Dr. James Nobles providing comprehensive women's health services at Mississippi Women's OB-GYN. Same trusted care, new location. 205 Marion Avenue in McComb, or call 601-250-4275.
Dave Hughes here. Remember every weekday morning at 9:06, it's Dave in the Morning, where we solve the problems of the world, or at least complain about them really loudly and sarcastically. And if you miss out, you can catch up with the podcast version of Dave in the Morning at supertalkpikecounty.com.
Welcome back. Supertalk Mississippi Pike County is where you're at. Dave is who you're with. It's a great Tuesday. You're having a great day. Repeat it after me, I'm having a great day. We've got to fight every way we can. Otherwise, every day is miserable and nobody wants that. Come on. Um, found that story that I've referred to. Uh, it was in, uh, Georgia. An 18-year-old came up and kicked a guy's buggy. Uh, the 48-year-old man who was pushing the buggy, uh, then pulled out a knife as the guy was walking away and stabbed him to death. He died, the 18-year-old died. 18-year-olds, their brains are not cooked. We like to pretend otherwise they're not. It, it's pretty widely accepted. Up until about 25, your brain is still cooking. Your, your front, prefrontal cortex is still baking. He just stabbed him to death at a Walmart, being charged with murder, obviously. So this is the atmosphere that we're in and this is the atmosphere we have allowed to develop in America and it's everywhere, including Pike County. You know, I'm telling the truth. We have plenty of examples I could trot out to prove that point. Everyone feels justified in killing somebody else because they have been insulted or minorly inconvenienced, or just feel like, uh, they deserve a little more respect. Let me explain something about respect. Respect is not given. Respect is not deserved. Respect is earned. You earn respect. That's the way it works. That's the way human beings work. You don't respect someone because they have a pulse. You earn respect. And I'm sorry, stabbing somebody to death because they kicked your buggy in Walmart? You have earned zero respect. Because at best, you're a hothead. At worst, you have zero value for any human life but your own and you think yours is the best that ever happened. Obviously, right? It's kind of implied by the action. We can talk all we want, we can do the high five emoji on Facebook and say praying as many times as we like. It does not fix that. It does not change that and you're fooling yourself if you think it does. Humans have stank as long as there have been humans. I use it all the time. I'm going to say it again here. At one point, according to the Bible, there were four human beings on the planet and one of them killed another one with a rock in a field. This is not new. This type of attitude, this type of behavior, this mindset, this is the way it's always been. Please stop acting like it's something new and oh my goodness, what has gone wrong? What has gone wrong? Is that we have kind of lost the plot. We have gotten so busy trying to make sure everybody's feelings are okay that we don't actually enforce common decency, common sense and proper behavior. And as a result, the canes of the world are running wild, rocking each hand over the most trivial, ridiculous, stupid things. Now, I'm not entirely sure. I think the 18-year-old actually came up and kicked his buggy a few times. It wasn't like an accidental bump. I mean, he was being an 18-year-old jerk. That's kind of what a lot of 18-year-olds do at times. Heaven knows I did. Everybody I know did. A lot of them were there with me while we were all being jerks together, trust me. It's part of being an 18-year-old. You don't deserve to get stabbed to death at a Walmart over it though. That's what has changed. We keep allowing this kind of behavior to happen without the appropriate level of response. Now what we have to do is get back to that appropriate level of response. And that's not going to be pretty. There's going to be a lot of wailing and gnashing of teeth and rending of garments. There's going to be a lot of wailing and gnashing of teeth and rending of garments, but it has to be done because if we don't, we're doomed as a society. I'd like to interject here and remind you, you're having a great day. Don't listen to the idiot on the radio, you're having a great day. So listen to the idiot on the radio. we have to change our mindset before we can change our approach, before we can change the results we're getting. Ton of bricks. That's what we need to come down like on everything that happens like this. Until the message starts to filter through, oh, well, probably shouldn't do that. And if it doesn't filter through, well, that person then has the golden opportunity to become part of the example instead of part of the solution. We are raising up the wrong behavior, the wrong type of mentality as the paragon of society we have for quite a while, and this is what it has led to. And now we want to be surprised. Now we want to be shocked. We want to be so upset. What have you done about it? Facebook posts don't count. A double check. God doesn't have a Facebook account. So what are you doing about it? Well, step one, you're having a great day. In the face of all that, in spite of that, in defiance of that, the best revenge is to have a great day. And spread it around. Final break, we're out right after this on this Tuesday morning on Supertalk Mississippi Pike County, 93.5. Keep it here.
Tired of living with an overactive bladder? Constant trips to the restroom and sudden leaks don't have to disrupt your life. Axonics Therapy at Southwest Urology Clinic offers a long-term solution helping you regain control and confidence. This advanced FDA-approved treatment is safe, effective, and designed to fit your lifestyle and best of all, it's right here close to home. Take the first step toward lasting relief. Call Southwest Urology Clinic at 601-250-4344 today to learn more about Axonics Therapy because confidence starts with control.
Dave Hughes here. Remember, every weekday morning at 9:06, it's Dave in the Morning, where we solve the problems of the world, or at least complain about them really loudly and sarcastically. And if you miss out, you can catch up with the podcast version of Dave in the Morning at supertalkpikecounty.com.